States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll start down here on my right with introductions.
Dan Poishon, Ward five.
Corinne McWigan, Ward one.
Lastly, Pam Hart, Ward two.
Pam Albert at large.
Sue Doris, Superintendent.
Jay Rich at large.
Adam Platt, City Council Representative.
Calvin Vincent, Student Representative.
Amanda Kuchar, Business Manager.
Scott Inear, Assistant Superintendent.
Pat Audio, Ward three.
And Quinn was not able to be here tonight. I'm going to start with the consent agenda, the approval of tonight's consent agenda, which includes the approval of tonight's agenda, the approval of the minutes of the November 19th, 2025 meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Pam, do I have a second? Corinne, all those in favor? Motion carries. We are going to start our evening tonight with our recognitions for our outgoing school committee members, Pam Hart of Ward two and Quinn Gormley of Ward four. Okay, so tonight we recognize and thank our outgoing school committee members for their dedicated service to our community. Serving on the committee requires long hours, many meetings, and time spent away from family. It involves difficult decisions, collaboration, and a deep commitment to our students and schools. We are grateful for the energy, care, and countless hours each member has given. Thank you for your service and the impact you've made on Auburn students, staff, and families. And now we recognize Pam Hart, who has completed three terms representing Ward two. Pam has been a steady and dedicated presence on the school committee, giving countless hours to subcommittee work and to supporting district initiatives. She has served on the Edward Little High School Building Committee, chaired the fundraising subcommittee securing the naming rights donation of the Donald M. Gay Performing Arts Center, and served as an integral member of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, Health and Safety Committee, Policy and Finance Subcommittee. Throughout her service, Pam has consistently focused on the needs, health, safety, and well-being of Auburn students. She has worked to ensure that every child, regardless of their background or circumstances, has access to the support, safety, and opportunities they need to succeed. Her commitment to breaking down barriers, addressing student challenges, and fostering inclusive, welcoming school environments has made a meaningful impact on our district. Pam has been a thoughtful collaborator, a strong listener, and someone who approaches public service with care, empathy, and respect. Pam, thank you for your years of dedication and your unwavering commitment to our schools. We are grateful for your service and proudly present this crystal apple and flowers in recognition of all you've contributed.
But it's on my computer.
Why don't you, I'm gonna do Quinn's recognition, and then you can speak after that. How about that? Okay. And even though Quinn could not be here tonight, we still want to recognize her. So we'd like to recognize Quinn Gormley, who has served one term representing Ward four. Quinn was elected via special election when the Ward four seat was vacant, and we are so grateful that she stepped up to serve her community. She has brought care, thoughtfulness, and a strong sense of responsibility to every aspect of her work on the committee. Her service on the curriculum and Health and Safety Subcommittee reflects a deep commitment to creating equitable, supportive, safe, and successful learning environments for all students. Quinn has worked collaboratively, listened openly, and consistently advocated for the needs of students, staff, and families. Her dedication has strengthened our district and helped ensure that decisions remain focused on what is best for students. Quinn, thank you for your service, your time, and your commitment to Auburn schools, and we will make sure that she gets her apple and flower recognition as well.
Thank you, Pam. That was, that was very, very sweet, and I didn't expect all that. Very touched. That was really nice. I just have a few words I wanted to say. I have never been this nervous at a school committee meeting in my life, but tonight, I don't know what's going on. All right, here we go. So I've had the great privilege of representing my neighbors and constituents from Ward two for six years. Throughout that time, I've advocated for students, staff, families, and all stakeholders with their best interests in mind when making decisions, and consistently kept my vow to truly listen to every person who approached me with concerns. As a proud mother of two Edward Little graduates, I felt it was time for someone with children or grandchildren who were still in the school to represent Ward two. In the time that I've been on the school committee, I've learned so much about our school community, as well as about myself. While I began my terms during a tumultuous time and with the challenges of COVID, I've also seen joyous moments, like when the ELHS class of 1951 made their generous donation to name the Edward Little Performing Arts Center after their great mentor, Donald M. Gay. And not to mention seeing the completion of our state-of-the-art high school and all the added programs it provided to our students, it provides to our students. I've also loved the holiday concerts that elementary students performed for us and the recognition of Auburn School Department retirees, as well as seeing student representatives grow into their roles of leadership. Throughout my time on the school committee, I've had the opportunity to learn so much about the logistics of how schools operate, and it reinforced my great admiration for the dedication and commitment that is shown every day by the Auburn School Department educators and staff. It's been an honor to work beside everyone on this school committee. You are all amazing individuals who have checked your ego at the door and invested your heart and time in the well-being of our schools and ultimately the students, staff, families, and all stakeholders. It's truly been an honor to work with Dr. Brown and now Dr. Doris. Dr. Doris, it's been such a privilege to work with you and what you lead, and what you lead with compassion, knowledge, fairness, transparency, and empathy. Your ability to truly listen, understand, and hold accountability in a way that is compassionate and educating is a great skill, and the Auburn School Department is so fortunate to have you leading them. You are a formidable leader. Thank you for your dedication, and please don't forget to take care of you. To my colleagues on the school committee, thank you for your commitment and dedication to our schools and ultimately our great community. Your act of service is so appreciated. I would like to wish the incoming Ward two school committee member, Ms. Edgcombe, the best, and know that our ward, that our ward will be well represented. It's been an absolute honor.
Thank you, Pam. Okay, it does not look like we have anyone here for public comment tonight. So, and we do not have, we don't have a, unless Steve wants to say something. So if, we don't have any public comments, we'll move on with the rest of our agenda. Do we have a presentation tonight? No presentation tonight. So, School Committee Student Representatives Report. Do we have a report tonight?
We do.
Okay. Take it away, Calvin.
I want to thank Mrs. Hart and Mrs. Gormley. I appreciate all you've done for the school board, and I'm sorry. I'm glad to see you guys, and I hope you have a good retirement, I guess. Not retirement, but, bad word, but. I'll start off at Edward Little tonight. EL recently, I believe it was two weekends ago, had the musical The Little Mermaid for the, their fall musical, The Little Mermaid. I believe it was, I actually could not make it, but I believe it might have sold out all three shows, or it was great attendance all three nights, and it was a huge success. Winter sports have now started. Every, the swimming was the last sport, and it started Monday. So all sports have started. Some sports already have having games and stuff like that, so that's good. And then teachers were celebrated before break for Staff Gratitude Day with pies for dessert during their lunch break. Looked really good. I was kind of jealous. Another, NHS, the National Honor Society, is having their kiddy night next Friday. So if anyone would like to drop their kids off, it's $10 from five to eight. It'll take your kids for you, if you'd like. And then I have some fall recognition honors for athletics and also jazz and music all state. Fifteen vocalists made District twos in the fall, and they will be performing, I believe in January sometime soon. I'm, I believe it's coming up. I'm sorry, I don't know the date. Four people made jazz all state, and then four people made instrumentalist music District twos as well. And finally, fifteen athletes across all sports at Edward Little made K-VAC first to second teams in the fall. And then there were a lot who also were honorable mentions and were on the all academic team as well. Moving on to AMS, Katie Kaufman, I might have butchered that name, I apologize, will be spearheading AMS Falcon Market again this year, which is what will be happening during this holiday season. And also, on December fifteenth, and then on December 15th and 17th, AMS will have tables set up in the cafeteria with items for students, for the students to choose for free, to wrap, and give as gifts to their families and loved ones. They are looking for donations for newer used children's book, decorations, trinkets, small household items, toys, wrapping paper, bowls, tape, and then to-go shopping bags with handles. AMS has also started their winter sports, and they have 110 students participating in boys' and girls' basketball, cheering, and alpine skiing. Additionally, their holiday door decorating competition has begun this past Monday. Doors will be judged on best use of core members and creativity. AMS was also able to support forty families with complete Thanksgiving meals through their dance and penny wars. We want to, AMS would like to thank the community, the school board, and the students of AMS for their generosity. And looking ahead, AMS's winter concert is on December 16th at the Donald M. Gay Auditorium, which will be at 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. Moving on to Fairview School now. Fairview just celebrated Tiger Day, which is an awards ceremony, oh wait, no, scratch that, where students reflected on their goals with a school-wide popcorn bar. It was a huge success, and all the students love it. Then additionally, Fairview will be celebrating and having their academic progress and awards ceremony on December 19th to celebrate good citizenship and attendance. Fairview was also able to support 20 families on their Thanksgiving food drive, thanks to the PTO and their food drive as well. And then, like, this is true for all of the elementary schools, they all performed at the Festival of Trees combined together during the day, one day last week. It's very cool. At Shoredwood Heights, they recently hosted their Hoedown Dance, their annual Hoedown Dance, which is organized by the Shoredwood Parent Group and had over 100 participants in attendance. A significant, also, a significant community outreach effort was also made to make, to feed Thanksgiving meals to families in need. Over 20 families were able to be fed. Looking ahead, at Shoredwood Heights, they, on December 9th at 2:00 p.m., they have their performance by the Tin Panic Steel Drum Band for the student body. Shoredwood Heights is also hosting a Pancake and Pajamas Family Breakfast on Saturday, December 13th from 8:30 to 10:30 a.m. And then finally, on December 15th, the annual holiday sing-along and community meeting will be held. This is very cool. East Auburn recently had their talent show for fifth and sixth graders, and over 30 students participated and performed in front of family and friends. Looking ahead, at East Auburn, they will be hosting their crafts for veterans for their holiday season. And then here is some photo, a photo from the Festival of Trees of East Auburn, but all the schools were there, which is really cool. And then moving on to Walton. Walton will be, also be hosting their awards assembly on Tuesday, December 16th to celebrate hard work, academic progress, excellent attendance, and more during the first semester of school for the students. Then, finally, moving on to Park Avenue. Park Avenue, like the other schools, all went on to the Festival of Trees on the morning of the 24th, and they also hosted their Thanksgiving food drive where they fed over 30 families in the Park Avenue School District. Just the photo on the right here. And then, to conclude, Park Avenue will be hosting its fourth annual Craft and Vendor Fair on December 13th from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. That is a Saturday. That is all I have tonight.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to our superintendent's report tonight, Dr. Doris.
Thank you very much, Chairperson Albert. For my update this evening, I'd like to begin by noting that the City of Auburn inauguration is scheduled for Thursday, December 11th at 6:00 p.m. The event will be held in the Donald M. Gay Auditorium at Edward Little High School, and we are pleased to be hosting this. Looking ahead, the next meeting of the school committee on December 17th will be a reorganization meeting. This will include the election of officers, and I will be starting the meeting that evening to begin the reorganization process. And my last item tonight is transportation update, and Mr. Inear will be providing a brief update on transportation, sharing information about staffing and the new implementation of the Bus Right program.
Thank you.
Mr. Inear.
Yes, so the implementation of Bus Right, the onboard platform to be able to track the buses as they're doing their route, has been going very, very well. We're getting good reports from the staff that it's very workable, very manageable for them, as well as the families are reporting how much they truly appreciate knowing when the bus is coming, because typically the bus says it's got like a 10-minute window, so it really allows them to know when the right bus is coming down the right street and which bus, and the timing of that, so the students are out there, which becomes critically important this time of year as the temperatures have changed dramatically. So families really appreciate that, as well as the tracking on being able to recognize when they're coming home. So we're really pleased with that. Staffing, we have, we are running 16 routes with 13 drivers, and so the other three are made up by our Transportation Director, Dave Fontaine, a substitute, and Northeast Charter is fulfilling the last route. We currently have five bus aides, five van aides, sorry, and 14 van drivers to go across 12 van routes. And so some of those get shuffled depending on multiple runs during the middle of the day, so just trying to understand that discrepancy, as well as we have one out on maternity leave. So in terms of their staffing, they are operating and they are hitting their marks, and routes are going, as well as we're hitting that time of the year where we really have a lot of our sports teams that are going to be going out. So we're into that next wave. We had a lull coming out of the fall season, and now we're going into the winter with lots of teams traveling. So more to come there, but things are looking good, and from all reports, morale is really positive down there. And again, they're appreciating the support that they are getting from folks, as well as the communication and the implementation of Bus Right.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question, actually, and Adam, you might be able to help with this. It's more about the City of Auburn, and it's about sidewalks. Are sidewalks being cleared appropriately so that kids that are walking to school have the access to the sidewalk and are not walking in the middle of the road, or on the side of the road?
I can answer what I can answer, so. So there typically are three sidewalk plows that are out working during a snowstorm or at the conclusion of a snowstorm. Today, we started with one because one was under repair, and the third one is due back for repair by the end of the week. And when I met with Public Works yesterday, they let me, not yesterday, Monday, they let me know about that. I communicated that out to the building principals just to make them aware of what to expect in terms of maybe kids being a little later, a little slower, as well as also shared that with transportation, just in terms of what they are knowing. So they typically run three, but today they were only able to run one. Hopefully, by the end of the day, they had the second one, and the third one should be back the end of this week. That's the best I can help you there.
Thanks. Thanks, Scott. I had a question about overtime. Do we run a lot of overtime in that department? Are there full-time drivers? I can't imagine there's 40 hours of driving in a week, so what, what do some of our 40-hour employees in that department do while they're not driving? Or is that, or do we just have drivers that don't drive a full 40?
Yeah, it, yes, that's, that's the answer. So they have their morning run, their afternoon run. Sometimes there are runs that are picked up in the middle of the day, which would add to their hours in terms of like, if kids had a field trip during the day, that adds to it, plus the after-school activities that would add to those hours that they would accumulate for the week.
So there's no guarantee of 40-hour weeks for these folks? It's, there may be opportunities to pick up more than a morning and an afternoon shift, but it's not a guarantee by any means. I'm just trying to understand the labor.
The money lady. The money lady can help us with that.
We have drivers that are hired at four hours a day, six hours a day, and eight hours a day, so the overtime really only shows up when those eight-hour-a-day people pick up extra trips, so. Those are approximate numbers.
Any other questions? Okay. Did you have anything else, Dr. Doris?
That's it for my report.
Thank you. I do not have a chairperson's report tonight. Adam, do you have a city council update?
Yeah, just a brief update, and that is that on Monday, the city council gave its final approval of the Public Safety Building. That is a future construction project on minded Ave that will demolish the existing building that houses Central Fire, and will put in a police station and a new central fire station. The current price tag, the price tag that was approved was $42 million. As you guys will recall, the, what's happening here, we didn't actually approve a dollar value. That dollar value was approved by voters via referendum several years ago. So the council had no authority to, to say, we don't like the number 42, we want to see it at 25. We couldn't do that. But we did have the authority to approve the final design, and so that is what occurred on Monday. The referendum proposed a rough design, and it was the prerogative of the city council to make sure that the design that was proposed was similar to the design that was originally discussed several years ago. So that's what happened on Monday. More, I'll keep you guys updated as more rolls out on that. That was it. That's my only update.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Adam? Okay. Moving on to our committee reports, we have the Policy Subcommittee Agenda and Minutes from the November 18th meeting linked, as well as the AMS Advisory Committee Minutes from the November 17th meeting linked. But where we have the policies from that Subcommittee meeting on our agenda tonight, we won't bother doing a review. We don't have any old business tonight, so moving on to new business, I'll entertain a motion to approve policy AUB JKAA, Use of Physical Restraint and Secclusion, for a first reading. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Pam, do I have a second?
Second.
Pat, can anyone from the Policy Subcommittee want to give an update on the changes to this policy? Pam?
The changes that were made, were made because the law changed, and it's just reflected from the MSA policy language. That's what, we've changed some language to just correlate with the MSMA policy. Laura Shaw, the Director of Special Services, discussed the district's policies regarding restraints and seclusions, and noted that the changes are minor. Just a couple changes in wording, and that's about it, but it's pretty much the same. But we just wanted to be in compliance with the main law and with the legal language that's already established.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions? Jay?
I have a couple, I'm sorry. So one part of the policy states if a less intrusive interventions have failed or been deemed appropriate, then we'll do seclusion. And I was just curious, who decides if it's, if that's happened, or if it's not appropriate to have those less intrusive interventions?
We have our Director of Student Services here tonight, and she is happy to answer those questions.
No, I'm happy to answer. So anytime a student is dysregulated and it's looking like they may need a physical intervention, there is usually a safety care team that's assembled that sort of assesses the situation. All members of the team have been trained in all of the de-escalation strategies that lead up to physical interventions, and every safety care team has a lead who helps determine, okay, now it's reached the point where the student is in imminent, you know, danger of bodily injury, so we will need to, and they, then they direct the team what to do.
So what you're saying is we're trusting the professionals that are in our school building?
Yes. All, all of the, anyone who is doing any of those have been trained, and usually the lead person has been trained many years in a row.
Wonderful, thank you. I have one more. I just want to understand a little bit better the rationale for removing the word voluntary from the policy.
Yeah, and I, I really can't speak to that. That was a change in the law. So the law, there, there were some legislators. I'm not sure where the movement was to change that. And so when the law changed, of course, we wanted to change the policy to reflect that, and essentially, we, I mean, we still obviously would never drag a student down a hallway, you know, unsafely or whatever, but what it does provide, it gives us more leeway to get them out of a situation, even if they don't, even if they don't necessarily want to leave if they're being very unsafe. So we can just remove them from the situation to a safer space. And we would still document that and do all of the paperwork and all of the procedures that go with, that would still be, you know, considered a restraint, so we do all the procedures around that. Thank you very much.
Anyone else have any other questions about this policy? Okay. Seeing none. All those in favor of, wait, let me get back to the right page here. All those in favor of approving policy AUB JKAA, Use of Physical Restraint and Secclusion for a first reading. Motion carries. Moving on, I'll entertain a motion to approve procedure AUB JKAA-R, Procedures on Physical Restraint and Secclusion for a First Reading. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Pam, do I have a second?
Second.
Pat, anyone able to give a quick summary on the changes in this policy?
Yes. Again, it's to correlate with the law and the legal jargon that, you know, so that we're in compliance with this main state law, and the same as the first.
Anyone have any specific questions? Jay?
Thank you. So in the procedure, it said that administrators should be notified after the incident, and I was just curious what the procedure is. Shouldn't our administrators know when it's happening?
So legality-wise, they, they just need to know within a certain timeframe, but So legality-wise, they, they just need to know within a certain timeframe, but practically-wise, it is, it is procedure to let them know when a student is in a restraint. And just because it's good practice, and as well, if, if the physical intervention gets to be a certain time limit, then an administrator has to make some decisions around that, so.
Thank you. Additionally, I did see a couple of pronoun changes that needed to be tweaked in the policy, and then last, can the school committee get copies of the annual restraint and seclusion reports?
Absolutely, anytime. It is, it is a report that I do in July of every year. I probably have the last eight or so years worth of data, if anyone's ever interested in that, but I do keep those records and reports to the state. As far as the pronouns, our practice is to always, in, in the report that we have to write per the law, we simply put the student's name in the report and refer to the student as the student's name.
Yes, I agree, just like in the, in the.
In the policy itself, yeah, in the procedure itself, we just have some pronoun corrections that need to happen.
Oh, yeah.
We'll be sure to change that for the second reading.
Is that data something that you want before the second reading?
No, not yet.
Or, okay.
Just, I, I think it would be nice for us to have knowledge of those things. Thank you for your hard work on this, I appreciate you.
Of course, anytime.
So just a quick note, so the pronoun changes will be updated prior to the second reading. Okay. I think that's minor enough, though, we don't need a motion on that. So, okay, so any other questions or discussion before we vote on this? Okay, all those in favor of approving procedure AUB JKAA-R, Procedures on Physical Restraint and Secclusion for a First Reading. Motion carries. We have a list of all of our upcoming meetings, as well as, as Dr. Doris mentioned, the City of Auburn inauguration ceremony, which is next Thursday, the 11th, and do I have any future agenda items or requests for information? Okay, seeing none. I'll entertain a motion to enter into an executive session pursuant to 1 MRSA 4056D for the purpose of labor contract negotiations. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Pam, do I have a second? Corinne, all those in favor? We are now in executive session. Thank you, everyone. Good night.